They're doing a little bit better and they put him back in the fire and now.
No.
But they just have to strictly take an order.
Yeah.
Basically.
Oh.
Some time to your driving the human.
Down.
Off.
Up.
Get her to work and protect people and now. He's there.
Yeah.
So that was the one.
Oh.
The failed man raising down.
Uh huh.
But just.
Yeah.
And down.
Ah huh.
I agree on this.
Like if you roll with it.
Now we got every man over here, so they just got their.
I wouldn't say just like this much because I was down. Show me the money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tell them.
Tell them.
Class.
Tell them.
That's what I told them.
No, so.
I see.
No, they're not.
I'm like.
I'm like.
So.
Uh, no.
Here.
If you had.
If you had.
A paper.
So.
My.
I drank a jar of it.
I was talking about that.
You're sort of felt better today. She's been there a little bit, not not close to that, but not bad. But she's been there for.
I know.
Uh.
It should really be.
Something that like she kept it ninety.
Um.
It makes you feel about that.
Yeah.
And she's getting ready to transfer to a different store with a team wage, so they're at a dollar rate.
That.
Um. I have a.
That guy yelped.
Mr. Thing.
I don't want to be a lot of.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's hard to say because we start to.
Who's yours?
Minimum wage.
That's.
You don't get minimum wage, but they don't give them no back support. I tell them all the time, you can't find another job because you know what? When they kick you off because your basket messed up, they're gonna say, we didn't know that. No, I don't.
Hello, hello. All right, Mitchell, testing the microphones, make sure they working tonight for. We the people who gonna get paid big time for being poison in Flint tonight. If they don't start a one of them council fights what.
Hello, hello. All right, Mitchell, testing the microphones, make sure they working tonight for. We the people who gonna get paid big time for being poison in Flint tonight. If they don't start a one of them council fights what.
They had taken on the riots out of seventy-five years. But if you got some everywhere, that's the key. I don't mean, I don't mean. I feel like they get the. They always. They got there because they were there since. Been trying to talk to me when I was, but I didn't. Kitchen had a lot of. Just texting kids and watching them play. Yes. They got back in last week. I think it's. They have. They have. They have. They have. They have.
What?
They have. 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 The smallest agenda is my big things for a street sweeper that I don't even ever see. Or I had nine. But I come right over here and I can see the street sweeper so busy over there by the library and all up in there and all downtown and yeah, he can see a street sweeper then.
Those streets are streets.
Yeah. No, he can't say. I need the street sweepers to get the night four.
Do you like gesture?
Oh, you know, they don't care about the night four, so why should I care about over there?
No.
Over there don't help me none. Okay.
Well.
Don't help me none when they all bags up into my basement.
We're all supposed to care about each other when they divide.
I need to care about each other.
I called down there and asked the street sweeper, they tell me they're all broke down and I walked around Chevrolet. I had three of them together.
That's right.
I just, I just said it's great.
Oh, here comes Leon. Are you? Oh, and.
And.
Woo.
Wow.
Oh. Oh my God. Oh. Oh. Woo.
They need to get to a general plan.
So.
That's my sex, anybody do.
That's my job.
Over there. I can't tell you he liked or he was with me. I will handle it with.
How you doing? Where you from? Got a woman out of.
Hold on.
Yeah. Hell, that's. You know. 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 Oh my God. So. So. The water's not there. Everyone.
We're playing.
Oh, she's an. Oh. She knows she's an. I'm. I'm. Call your meeting order.
Oh.
She's a woman. She's a. 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 Well, she's a woman. She's a. 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 She's my favorite. She loves.
Kids are sick. No, we're close to them. Neither sick or tall, but either close.
I was there. I was there. I was there. Two liters nine. He looks nice without my laws. It's impressive. I wear a rental end, but then I'm on a. I'm a. I'm a.
They're gonna tell me, kids gonna get money before I do.
That's right. They just want us to hurry up, die. Hurry up, die. And then we'll. Uh, they. They're talking. I'm talking. I'm.
A couple weeks ago, said he didn't know nothing about it.
Me. I'm giving. I'm. I'm.
Madam Clerk. We have a quorum, if we could please, um, do roll call again, thank you. Okay.
Hold on. Night four, save today.
Okay.
Uh oh.
Mr. Alamin.
Uh oh.
Present.
Call her out.
Dr. Lewis.
Present.
I hear too.
Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley.
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat.
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett.
Present.
Leon.
You have. You have five members present?
We have five members present. It's now time for the reading of the disorderly persons city code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code, section thirty-one dash ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery in disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed. Now it is time for a request for agenda changes and or additions. Are there any requests for changes and or additions? Seeing as how there are no requests for changes and or additions, um, the legal department, uh, Department of Law has requested a closed session with the city council to discuss the national prescription opiate litigation, the produce settlement, and the generic manufacturing settlements. Um, I will now turn it over to the city attorney to discuss further.
Uh, good evening, council members. On the agenda tonight for closed session is the consideration, um, of the latest settlement offer in the national opioid settlement pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight one E. We'd like to go into closed session to discuss this, uh, settlement. And we do need six members to vote yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Priestley.
I'd like to make a motion to go to closed session.
There's a motion on the floor to go into closed session, is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward.
Is there discussion?
Hold on.
We normally don't, but do you, do you need to? Yeah, it's required in our rules.
It's, it's actually not. Um, is there a discussion on this, Madam Clerk?
Uh, no, there's.
I, I didn't think there was, that's why I asked if you needed to. Because I will, I will if you need to.
Yeah.
All right, there is, um, so, go ahead, Madam, I mean, Councilwoman Burns.
No, that was it.
Oh.
Yeah, yes. Yes, I'd like discussion.
No, I'm saying, go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you, I'm for you to the, um, city attorney. City Attorney, um, Attorney Girlie, I want to make it very clear because I learned before I go back and I'm sitting in my council seat, um, with my city address, and Councilman Leon Alamin placed a personal protection order against me with an address that does not reside within the Flint city limits. So he did not use my legal name and he did not use my known address. And so I did not recei, I didn't find out about, I never received it until, um, Wednesday. So this is an abuse of the system. I think he's gotten six PPOs in the past two years
Hold on.
against other women.
Councilwoman Burns.
So is it, um, yep, so is, can he be here? Because if he's threatened by me, a woman,
Come on.
is, can he be here or do I need to leave?
Uh, through the chair to Councilperson Burns. Um, a personal protection order is not, um... Uh, through the chair to councilperson Burns. Um, a personal protection order is not, um...
Make it good.
It's not a case that the city law office deals with. Uh, the city has not been served with a PPO. Therefore, I cannot comment on that. Um, and to that extent, I cannot state that the councilperson in the first ward should not be here.
Or, I mean, or if it's against me, technically I, who did not ever break the law, should not be here. Or was I ever charged with a felony for domestic violence? So, with that saying that it's not a city issue, um, I'm gonna take precaution because I'm not going to be in my seat to give him anything else to go on. I'll have my day in court since the city is allowing this to happen.
Leon.
Alrighty, so we will now do the roll call vote to go into, um, closed session. Mr. Alamin.
Yes.
Dr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley.
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
No.
Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat.
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett.
Yes.
The vote is five yes, one no. The vote is five yes, one no. We do not have enough to go into closed session regarding our opioid settlement money that we all care so much about. Moving on. It is now time for public comments. Members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box was placed at the entrance to the council chambers for collection of registrations. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public comment with only one speaking opportunity. First public speaker, Madam Clerk. I do want to remind everyone that they are subject to the, um, Disorderly Persons City Code subsection as well as the Flint City Council rules, and this is everyone's warning. Go ahead, Madam Clerk, first public speaker. First speaker is Zoe Lynch.
Hi, my name is Zoe Lynch. I, uh, am here representing NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness. I just wanted to open an invitation to the commu, the community to, uh, attend an eye care walk, uh, sponsored by, co-sponsored by Genesee Health System and NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness. It will be at the Church Without Walls at 6202 Dupont Street on September the 27th from, uh, 2:00 until probably 5:00. There will be food and entertainment and of course, a one-mile walk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk. Next speaker is Sarah Houston.
My name is Sarah Houston, sixth ward resident. First, I'm gonna say that I'm disappointed that once again, there are no sign language interpreters up here. It's a matter of a phone call away. And access shouldn't be voted on. Access should be given because it's their equal right. So I'm gonna say that again. I'm gonna start with that. But I am just disgusted. I walked in here dis, uh, what I just heard is disgusting. And for you, Ms. Liddell, who walked in here proud with him, for you to say innocent till proven guilty, for you to just be all extra nonchalant about it, y'all are disgusting. This man has a domestic violence abuse on him. Innocent till proven guilty might, but it might tell, making sure I don't cuss, for you. I'm disgusted. As women, you should be ashamed of yourself. You should be supporting women. This shouldn't be here, and for him to put a restraining order on her so she can't come to do her duty, you sorry. You a sorry individual, and I don't even know you. That's sorry. And I don't care. You can respond later. I don't care. Now, 4:30, this meeting is supposed to start. Y'all didn't walk in till 4:40. My time is precious, just like yours is. You guys are here to serve the people. Ms. Tanya didn't walk in, didn't walk in until 4:40, but I understand now. She didn't know if she could or she couldn't. Because somebody put a restraining order on her. Not what I came here to talk about today, but I am disgusted. And I'm sick and tired of you watching the box. Meeting starts at 4:30 and ain't nobody here, but we gotta hurry up and, and I gotta get here before 4:30 so I can put my name in the box. But then we don't get started till 4:45. My time is precious. I have things to do. Be respectful of our time if you want us to be respectful of yours. Councilwoman Carter, I thank you. I thank you for coming back. I thank you. I appreciate you. I understand where you're coming from. 239-3112 is Communication Access Center's phone number. 239-3112. Call them and get access in here for your people. 45 seconds. The city of Detroit is giving out, uh, bed shaker alarms to their deaf and hard-of-hearing citizens. It is free from the state of Michigan. Can we please check into that? Ask the fire department in the city of Detroit how they got theirs, please, so that our citizens can get theirs as well. Those are life-saving devices. They connect to their smoke alarms and their, uh, carbon monoxide detectors. So please make sure someone check into that if you could. I got 16 seconds. I'm gonna keep on talking because it's my right and since, you know, y'all be taking my time and, you know, and all of that stuff. Again, disgusting, disgusting, disgusting. Change your attitudes, work for the people. That's what you're here for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk. Next speaker is Stanley Wood.
Stanley, Stanley. Get him with some rules and laws.
First of all, Leon, you big piece of doo-doo. You do not live with me, as you stated on Facebook. That's obviously not true. I would have nobody living in my house that's involved with domestic violence. But I want to get a shout out to baby girl talking to me yesterday. She prayed for me for strength and wisdom to do the right thing. So, my first thing I want to do, uh, and I'll do it when I admit when I'm wrong. I want to apologize for last meeting, for my outburst. It was non-called for. The problem is, I'm very passionate about domestic violence because I grew up with it in my family. I know what my mother went through. I know what I went through. And to have this piece of crap sitting up here right now, knowing goddamn well, there's plenty of stuff. I'm so pissed right now. Um, 250-290, the market receiving, uh, more money.
More, we don't know.
That should be, uh, should be denied. It didn't go through a committee. The market has received in excess of $10 million already to date in loans, grants, tax breaks, and in-kind donations. Most recently, in May of this year, uh, from CS Mot, they received $1.5 million. Enough to stock the shelves, hire employees, and open the doors, as CS Mot says. Um, they've gotten money from CS Mot. They've gotten money from, uh, Ruth Mot Foundation, from Community Foundation of Greater Flint, from Michigan Good Food Funds, Healthy Food Financing Initiatives, Fair Food Funds. And now they want another $300,000? Somebody's trying to get some more vacations paid for. We'd say to pay for his house wherever he's staying, but he, he made it clear that he's just been on vacation. I got 50 seconds left. I'm gonna get to what we talked about in my next speaking. But I'm gonna use my last 40 seconds to tell you how much of a piece of crap you are.
Come on.
And to talk about Liddell and Candace and.
Priestley.
No, uh, Bishop Martin and your guys' conversation. And Liddell, for you to use the words that you did to explain a black person, I'm appalled. If I call somebody at the N-word, I'm gonna be in trouble, okay? Half of my family is black, but I'd still be in trouble. For you to say what you did in that chat was wrong. I think you guys would learn that this guy's already been caught up in it. How the hell will you guys get caught up in it again?
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk. Next speaker is R.L. Mitchell.
Oh, don't worry. Leon knows he's a piece of doo-doo. Hello. My name is R.L. Mitchell. I live on 759 East Linden Avenue in Ward, Third Ward. And you see, my councilperson is not in a seat. And, and just got a walk on and, and ain't in a seat. What do you think about that? The rest of, Liddell, hello? This is my, I mean, now, but before the situation in, uh, this fireman started in Flint talking about calling people arsonists, the retired fireman come on the job and, and using them words, et cetera, et cetera. The other day, I was attacked by, by the one of the mans of the cloth. He didn't know he was attacking me. I don't know. Because ever since I heard about the church got blowed up and burned up and, and nobody can catch the arsonist or that they calling, but they don't want him to come and speak and show who he is on St. Michael's, on McCullin. I was sitting on my front porch one day, and I didn't feel like going in the backyard throwing it, feeding them alley cats. So I put it on my, all on my porch and sit there, and all of them came on my porch, but three raccoons, three, four skunks and, and other kind of animals come. And then the preacher says, he came out, he just moved in the neighborhood. And Tommy's come out the door with, with his bodyguard, with the dickin'. He's a, he's an arsonist. You're not feeding them, them groundhogs. It's, if he is, I'm gonna shoot him with my nine meter and, and bring him down to city hall. And I said, man, I didn't even respond to, dude, wait for my response. That's what I call, as the preacher of packing, look out for the public, the people who call themselves talking about Jesus. Oops, did I say the bad word, Miss Mashak? Oh, you know, this shit, oh, all this doo-doo's, I almost said shit. I mean.
Mr., Mr. Mitchell, that is your time. Have a seat. Next public speaker.
Hey, bitch, I got 50 minutes, what the?
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk. Next public speaker. That is your time.
Now listen here, Leon.
That is your first warning because I just told you that is your time.
Thank you, America.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk. Next speaker is Beverly Lewis.
Good evening. So they said my name. I don't need to say that again, but I would like to say that I am a member of Metropolitan Baptist Tabernacle and I am a committee member for our annual sickle cell walk. Leon, I'm glad you're here tonight. I know that most, if not everyone, is now aware of the post that was placed on Face, Facebook on Friday evening concerning sponsorship of the event. I'm gonna be nice. I'm gonna read my pastor's post for all to hear because it was a great response. He said, "We are aware of the post that was made earlier by one of our city leaders. It has since been removed. Members of our sickle cell committee and myself have had conversation with him, and he has apologized for the misleading post. We all must understand the power of integrity." I want to repeat that. "We all must understand the power of integrity." "The purpose of this walk is bigger than anyone and all of our sponsors. The Metropolitan Sickle Cell Committee has been dedicated to educating and bringing awareness of this disease for well over two decades. This event also helps us to raise funds and give financial support to our sickle cell warriors and their families. We appreciate all of our partners, sponsors, all of our volunteers, and the community as a whole who support these efforts. It is always Metropolitan's intention to give God the glory in everything that we do, and so it shall be done." I wholeheartedly agree with him. It's so sad that he can't even sit there and listen to me. I agree with what pastor said, but I'd like to add that while I can appreciate that an apology was given, I personally would like to have the apology be as public as the action that he took to remove the actual sponsors and to place his name and picture over their names. That was so disrespectful. So disrespectful. I also needed to be understood that pastor's statement that I repeated saying that we all must understand the power of integrity, that wasn't just for the congregation. Now, thank you for listening to me, and I'd also like to say that we actually have a blood drive to further support our sickle cell wa, uh, warriors on Friday, September 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3, 2:45 p.m. at Metropolitan. Please come and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk. Next speaker is David Peche.
David Peche, Fourth Ward. I'm here for, I'm tired to get some information. In the last week, I've read, we, uh, made a big settlement on a water settlement. 25,000 people are gonna get this money, but 15,000 of them are kids. When this thing started 11 years ago, I think we had 80,000 people in this city. And the older people have died off. Maybe that's what they've been waiting for, but I don't understand how you can give adults who have been in charge of this thing or have been taking care of people, doing the best they can, replacing everything in their house, I mean, water stuff, and you're only gonna give 10,000 people? This doesn't even make sense. How much money is these people getting? We just like that kind of information.
That's right.
And I don't think that's asking for too much. And I think that doctor's probably involved in a lot of this because she likes to give all the money to kids, which I'm all for kids, but let's take care of the adults that died, been sick and everything else, and only 10,000 of them are gonna get it? That doesn't make sense. That's the end of that. And I want to make comment on this $300,000 going to that grocery store. That's crazy. Nine years ago, the guy from Hammany Brothers took over that store over there in that mall, redid it all in six months. And that's how long he lasted. Six months. They stole him blind, closed him up. People bitch, well, we ain't got no store to buy from. Oh, why didn't you, they had the best. That was the best store that ever built in Flint, and nobody would go to it. And we've been feeding this place ever since. They haven't sold a loaf of bread. $10 million, somebody said. You gonna give them more money? There's something wrong with you. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk. Next speaker is Mari Copeny.
The mayor loves to get on social media and throw around big words and don't make a lot of sense. For example, saying the chaos that occurred in council back in Jews, was, back in June was an insurrection in West Flint's version of January 6th, but it wasn't. The past weekend, the mayor said there are certain council members taking part of treasonous behavior. Treasonous behavior by definition is acting in a way that betrays one's country or ruler by plotting to overthrow the government, aiding enemies in war, or attempting to kill or injure, injure the head of state. Now, I don't know about you, but I don't see any sitting, I don't see any sitting council member attempt to do any of those things. He also goes on to speak about attendance of, of council members and how not showing up for work is a good thing. And I agree, it's not, it's not a good thing. I think he would agree that not showing up for over a month is unacceptable. It's also not a good thing for the city attorney to say, say that the attendance isn't mandatory. Just a friendly reminder, reminder, you work for the people, not the mayor, so it's time to make decisions that are in the best interest for all the people here. Next, not, next, not a single person should, should go to a funeral of a young person killed by gun violence and get up there during the time and reflect about the young person's life and talk about what hood are you from? And, and use the time to try to campaign. When, when that is done by an elected official, that is absolutely deplorable. Also, elected officials shouldn't be out in the community following around residents and taunting them. Our leaders are supposed to hold themselves to a higher standard and not behave like a rabid dog. Also, you shouldn't be able to beat the hell out of the mother of your child and be allowed to maintain your seating council. You, you can't expect the youth to remain positive when those in charge are, are horrible role models. Now, on to some positives in our community. Tanisha Thompson with Sisters Supporting Sisters is hosting an event called Kingdom Connections Downtown on Sunday, September 14th. It's a family event and something positive to do in the community. I also want to bring up Prince Tally again. This past weekend, he and the Willie Boys hosted their first ever community back ride out, and it was a huge success. I would love to see everyone give both of these people support as they work to give the youth of our community positive experiences. And I also really hope that you get out of your seat. You are disgusting. You're disgusting too. You're disgusting. Basically, if y'all support Leon, y'all are nasty. Point blank.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk. The next speaker is Kylani Copeny.
One, two, three, all eyes on me. I'm Kylani Copeny and I am 13 years old and I'm the city council kindergarten teacher. Last time I was here, we reviewed our basic rules we should have learned back in kindergarten. We have been working hard at reviewing and mastering our basic rules we should have learned back in kindergarten, but some of you are still struggling to grasp these basic con- but some of you are still struggling to grasp these basic concepts. But it's okay, me, an actual child, is here to help guide you through the process all over again. I believe that with lots of repetition and practice, you'll be able to demonstrate these skills. One, treat, treat others the way you would like to be treated. It's not nice to roll your eyes when someone else has the floor. It's also not nice to stare at people like you want to eat them, it makes others extremely uncomfortable. Two, when someone is speaking, listen to them and give them your full attention. That means not looking down at your phone and texting other people, having conversations under the table, or laughing at them. Some of you are really struggling with this one. It also means don't interrupt them. Three, your tone means just as much as what you're trying to say. Talking to people in a condescending tone doesn't make them understand your point, it just pisses them off. Four, don't tell lies. That means don't Photoshop yourself onto event flyers and call yourself a sponsor. Five, no bullying, that means both verbally and physically. That shouldn't be following, you shouldn't be following people around, taunting them or threatening them. That also means keeping your hands to yourself. Six, no sleeping in class. I know council is new to some students, but we need you to be awake, attentive, attentive and ready to learn. You can be civically engaged when you decide, when you decide, when you decide the middle of council meetings are a great time to take a nap. As elected officials, I expect you to behave like star students and not actual children.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Hi, my name's Natalie Wright and I live in downtown Flint. And I started coming more regularly to city council when that young woman was shot, 810 Day, because of the disparity I've seen in the predominantly black events versus the predominantly white events in my eyes and what, that we had, Red Cross and everything. But you guys know all this, you've heard me talk about it. But now I'm curious, if Chief Green doesn't have to come to council, how, how do we get him to listen to this stuff? How do we find out how it's staffed? You know, how do we find out how 810 Day was staffed versus the other days? I'm also wondering what the resolution for Tanya and Leon is gonna be so that we can get some of these things passed and, um... But basically, that's it for me. Like, how do we, how do we get him in here? How do we find out how that tragedy happened where there was no police out 810 Day really? And for the Dayton family, which is just crazy. So that's kind of what I want to know is what's the resolution gonna be for that? And I also wanted to remind everybody that Trump is in office and emergency management's bad, but it'd be even worse with him. So whatever we're doing with our funding, we really gotta button it up because that would be the worst thing to happen here, because then it would probably bring martial law too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Gladys Williamson.
Well, son, all right, to start with you in that first ward, I don't know how you have the guts to come and face all these women sitting here that have been abused by men. And I don't care, then what I want to know is, how do we get you out of here? That, that's what I want to know. How do we get you out of here? Because you don't deserve to sit in that seat. You don't deserve to be in that seat. And, Liddell Lewis, you ought to be ashamed of yourself for butting up to him. You butter up to him, Judy Priestley, she butters up to him. And Candace Machette, you got a lot of nerve from the history that you grew up in. Yeah, yeah, don't look up, all you people, you know what? You don't have the guts to look up. You can look up with the woman that was just here? Yeah. You know, I don't have to speak nice to you because you know what? I've been around you too long and I know exactly who yous are. You are crummy. And now let's speak about this man under my feet. This man.
Please, please pause the time, please pause the time.
For what?
I'm gonna ask you, I understand you're very passionate about what you're saying. I'm gonna ask you not to bang on city property, that is destruction of property. So please don't bang on city property.
I don't see any of it broke. Don't tell me how to feel with my passion.
I didn't tell you how to feel.
You do not have the right to make me feel.
Pause the time.
Stop the time.
Pause the time. Ms. Williamson, be clear that I currently have the floor. I did not tell you how to feel. I said, I understand you're passionate, do not destroy city property as well.
I have not destroyed city property.
This is not, please stop unpausing the time until I ask you to.
Yeah, you owe me about 10 seconds.
I will handle that part. But what I'm saying to you is I completely understand that you're passionate about what you're saying.
I'm pissed.
I'm not, and I get it, but what I'm asking you to do is not destroy city property.
I have not destroyed city property.
Ms. Williamson, this is not a back and forth. This is not a back and forth. So what I'm gonna ask you to do is I am, I'm currently speaking, I'm not going to speak, stop speaking. If you would like to continue your time, just allow me to state what I stated and then I can get your time back and you can continue speaking. That's how this is about to work, all right? So again, completely understand that you are 100% passionate about what you're saying, not trying to stop you from saying what you're saying, but those microphones are very fickle. So please, don't bang on the microphones. Can we please put our time back at 1:45? Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Williamson, you have the floor.
And listen, when, when you shut the mic off and I have to get up here and bang on this little thing and find out that you've had the mic off for everybody that got up here and speak, spoke except for me because I was like banging on it, yeah, no, and you had the mic off. And you guys thought that was funny back then. But I'm gonna tell you what, when you play your jokes on us sitting back here, the man underneath my feet right now, and I mean literally, he is of the devil and he is under my feet. This man had the nerve to run out and say what he said, and all he's doing is being a distraction to what's going on. We don't have the city chief coming up here to explain how he hasn't taken care of the people, or part of the people. And we don't have the mayor seeing anybody. Yeah, he won't see nobody unless, unless you're gonna get a favor done by him and, and you owe him something. Yeah, that, that's when he'll speak to you. He don't speak to nobody. And I resent him distraction and speaking of, about people that sit up, that, yeah, are treasonous. Really? Because I think pretty much the way he's run this city is treasonous. Treasonous, flat out treasonous. And one of these days, we're gonna get control of this city council and we're gonna hold yous all accountable, accountable. And I don't want to have to look at this man. I, I grew up with abuse by my dad, my mother. My mother married my dad three times thinking it would change and it never changed.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The final speaker, the final speaker for this meeting is Beverly Biggs.
My name is Beverly Biggs Levy. I think you need to go downstairs and tell the mayor that Lent or law won a case. And I know the lawyer that was there, he was so angry, he said he coming back. Tell him, come on Boo Boo, we waiting on him. And Judy, I know you have a cat, but if somebody wring your cat's neck and beat it up, you're gonna wanna do something to them. But it's okay for Leon to beat the young lady up. Candace, you don't have any kids, so you don't know how I feel for someone to beat their daughter, their sister, their auntie. You know, I know your dad did 190 counts, but you still don't know because you don't have any kids. And Leon, you are shame, you are doggone shame. It's timeout. You don't live in the first ward, for one. You on Sherman Street. See, this is, this is the thing that people don't understand. We have a Sherman Street in Flint, but the Sherman, the inn that you live on is in Mount Morris Township. You know, you got a PPO on me, but I'm, I'm fighting it, I'm still fighting it. We'll be back in court. I will be back in court again. And this time I'm coming for, you coming for, because I'm sending you to court. You guys are shame. He got caught at Liddell's house, leaving Liddell's house where they picked him up at. And you two walk in together like you Boo Boo and Foo Foo. Like it was a happy day. It is not a happy day, it is sad day for the city council. You know, you got the news back there just to talk to Leon. That's a doggone shame. But you got this mother over here, that daughter has been beaten, beaten. And you say he's innocent until proven guilty? What motive he had to do? He guilty. He guilty, and then put a life insurance out on her? You first need to go back to school and learn how to spell. Because you spelled my name B-E-B-E-R-L-E-Y. That don't spell Beverly.
Thank you. That is now the end of public speaking. It is now time for council response. Council members may respond once to all public speakers only after all public speakers have spoken. An individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak during council response?
I'm chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward, you have the floor.
I'd like to address Mr. Peachey. Mr. Peachey, I stand, I have stood firm against my support on, on the North Flint market. I am not going to vote for that resolution. I have never voted for that resolution and I never will. Number two, regarding the, um, the water settlement payments, that's the courts. We have, we have requested, a letter has been sent to the special master asking that she attend, but as far as, I don't know that that's been scheduled or not, but we would like those kinds of answers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who wishes to speak during council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the first ward, you have the floor.
I just would like to thank everyone for sharing their thoughts and concerns with us today. Your input is crucial to the work we do as a council and reflect the diverse voices of our community. As a representative for the ward one, I want to assure that I, I take your feedback seriously. I understand that there are various opinions on the matters we will be discussing today and things that you, the public, may have some concerns about. Thank you for being engaged in the process. I would like to address the comments and resolutions that some of my colleagues recently presented and continue to spray out here, asking for me to suspend, voluntary suspend myself, get off council and these type of things. First and foremost, I would like to thank everyone who has stood by me during these challenging times. Your support means more than I can express. I believe it is crucial to allow the legal process to unfold. I may not have been inside the chambers, but I have continued to serve the residents of ward one. And I am determined to do so as I continue to finish out my term. Furthermore, most of the residents have my direct line. And for those who may have called my city cell phone, I just received it back from our city clerk last Monday when it was returned to her by the councilwoman in the sixth ward who had it illegally. I am dedicated to serving the residents and I will continue to do so while defending my name. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response? Seeing as there's no one else who wishes to speak during council response, I'll just take a quick two seconds. Um, there were some actions spoken that we were, uh, that we discussed during the vice president's briefing last week. As you can see, there is another scheduled 10-minute address and so I will update you all on the progress that we talked about last week. Seeing as how that I am the final speaker during public, excuse me, during council response, it is now time for the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
I'd like to motion to send the consent agenda to council.
There is a motion to send the consent agenda to council.
Support.
Uh, it has been moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward. Are there any separations?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Priestley.
250290, to reallocation of ARPA funds, North Flint Food Market Cooperative.
Alrighty, are there any more separations?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the ninth ward.
Complete separation.
Alrighty, we have a total separation of all agenda items. Moving on to our first resolution, which is 250223-T, which is the grant acceptance for Financial Recovery Technical Assistance, CSMOT Foundation. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
Um, I'd like to move that to council.
There has been a motion to move this to council, is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward, is there discussion in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the ninth ward, you have the floor.
Uh, through you to, uh, Mr.
I believe Seamus is here.
Yes.
Seamus, if you will join us at the lectern. If you want to start your question, as he's on his way, he has to grab his.
Damon, the lecturer.
Your time is taken.
There, there was question and request last week for information regarding the budget.
So can we pause his time really quickly? Can we pause his time really quickly? What I'm going to ask everyone to do, because we understand that there are a lot of working parents who work for the city, and sometimes when we have these afternoon meetings, they may have to have their children with them. As you can see, he is holding a very young child in his hands. And so what I would ask for the audience to do is respect that young child that he is holding. So any heckling, name-calling, anything of that nature, please, please, let's not do that while that child is there. All right, so that is your first warning. You're welcome. All right, and so again, I'm gonna ask the audience to be respectful of the fact that there is a child here now. Please start his time.
Can you, can you?
So you should have been respectful, that's your first warning.
Go ahead.
The, the question was around the, uh, the budget with regard to the offset with these funds coming in and how.
Right, as, as was stated last week, um, this grant, it's the third time we've received this grant. It's the third iteration of this grant. It was a, it was part of the previous budget, FY24. Council adopted FY24 as FY25, which included the $750,000 from FY24 for this grant. So the resolution to accept that grant, I believe council have seen that before. And that's all I can say, it was part of FY24. I tried to have a sidebar, Mr. Pfeiffer, to explain it, we had a conversation about it. So this is just, um, accepting funds that technically have already been approved as part of the budget. It's not freeing up any funding, it's not freeing up any other funding. There's 130,000 that's professional services, automatically that's not freeing up any funding because that's as needed. The 620,000 that's going towards covering about 10 different, a percentage of 10 different employees, it's not gonna be freeing up their funding.
Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir.
Is, is that what you would say also?
The only difference I would make is that, uh, he meant, uh, the 25 budget was adopted for 26. Out of that... Out of that, he was right. The, we're not increasing the budget. It's what we, it was adopted in the FY twenty-five budget. We adopted for FY twenty-six. The same dollars, same grant, nothing's changing.
Have, have, I know we, in effect, adopted the previous budget. Have we seen as council had that signed budget presented to us or made available or?
I don't know. I can make, send you a copy if you'd like.
Yes, please. Because I, I know, from what I understand, it took a while for even, for it even to get signed.
There, there were a number of questions that we had to resolve before we knew exactly what we had proven, yes, what's been approved. It's the same budget as was adopted for the FY twenty-five budget, and I, we can send that to you, not a problem.
Okay, just, just one moment. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Through you to the clerk. Because I believe the appropriate way, if I, if I understand correctly, for such a request should be through you to Mr. Moore. If you would send request for copy of signed budget such that it can be distributed and dispersed to all nine council persons.
Point of information.
What, could you, what's your point?
The budget was included on our email that said what was approved for the day that, on the date that we approved the budget. When we got the email that listed all the approved resolutions, I believe that budget was attached to that resolution because I did look at that. Am I correct?
Madam, madam clerk, is that correct? I believe I recall seeing it as well, but I just want to check with you.
So the resolution that council adopted, that the resolution adopting the budget has been posted as the adopted budget, but I would still send a request to Mr. Moore in case there's some other documentation he wants to include.
I think he just wants the signatures. He wants it with the signatures.
Thank you, clerk, down here.
Alright, is there anybody else in the first round of discussion? Anybody in the second round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one in the second round of discussion, thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you. This is the roll call vote to send resolution two five zero two two three dash T, which is the grant acceptance for financial recovery technical assistance, CS Mott Foundation to council. Roll call, madam clerk.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Excuse me, Ms. Johnson is absent. Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mushat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. Resolution two five zero two two three dash T, which is the grant acceptance for financial recovery technical assistance. CS Mott Foundation has been moved to council. Moving on to resolution two five zero two seven seven dash T, which is the collective bargaining agreement, City of Flint Police Officers Labor Council, Flint Police Department Sergeants, what is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
A motion to send two five zero two seven seven to council.
There's been a motion made by councilwoman in the fourth ward to send it to council. Is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward. Is there discussion in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the ninth ward, you have the floor.
Would this be HR? Who, who would?
It's training. It's the collective bargaining agreement. I believe the deputy chief is here, so deputy chief?
No, him again.
And then, do we need, do we need Eddie?
Do we need Eddie?
If we could also have HR join us as well, that would be great.
We know who's not here, and that would be the chief.
So. This, this is a a one-page resolution, and I would like to hear more about what all it's, who all is impacted, sort of some of the financial impact to the city, that type thing. I mean, I, I don't, in this packet, I don't see that or anything around that.
Twenty-four sergeants that are affected by this twenty-four. The financial implications of this is forty-six thousand four hundred and I think forty-six dollars.
That, is that?
Four thousand.
Is that total impact?
I'm sorry, forty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Say that.
Forty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Is the?
Look at it right.
Is the total impact?
For this one? Yes.
And how many, how many persons is this impacting?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four persons? Okay. At forty-eight thousand?
Forty-six.
Okay. And that's, that's the only group that's impacted?
At this time, yes.
When you say at this time, is there?
We're still negotiating four more contracts. So at this time, this is the sergeants, and we do have a tentative agreement signed by the union.
And who is that one for?
This is for the sergeants.
No, the one that you say you have a tentative, is that you're referencing this?
Yes.
Okay. But that's what I was asking. You said at this time. There's, there's something else with regard to the sergeants to come?
No, 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 no. That's it. For the sergeants at this time.
Okay, so what were you referencing when you said at this time?
I was saying that we have other unions that we are still bargaining with, FPOA. We have lieutenants, we have, so there's a number of others that we're still bargaining with.
Okay. I, I yield.
Thank you. Excuse me, sir. You have a tripod, and I know that you're not new to council nor our rules, so I need you to do one of two things for me. Either take your tripod to the back or detach that for me. One of two things. One of two things. One of two things. That's your first warning. That's your first warning. You've been asked to do something. We have council rules. You've been asked to comply with them, so either take your tripod where it belongs or detach it. That's all you have to do. You are removed from this meeting. Please leave.
They have rules right there.
Back to our discussion in the first round. Is there anyone else who would like the floor in the first round of discussion? Anyone else who would like the floor in the first round of discussion? Anyone who would like the floor in the second round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Priestley, you have the floor.
I just want to let our colleague know that some of these things discussed on collective bargaining are done in closed session and are not able to be shared with the public. And if, so if you don't attend the closed session, you don't learn the details that are, that you might need in order to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in the second round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one, oh, okay. Councilmen in the ninth ward.
With understanding that information can only be shared or maybe limited, to be provided for me outside of open, I'm outside of closed session, I believe or I feel it is my fiduciary right or fiduciary responsibility, let me say, as I cast my vote to ensure that I have as much information as I can have to make an informed vote. That said, I wouldn't be casting an informed vote on this evening in the affirmative otherwise in that you will hear from me a no on this vote.
Anybody else in the second round of discussion? Anybody else in the second round of discussion? Alright, seeing as how there's no one else, I will go ahead and take my time. I do think that it is important for us to realize as adults in charge of making financial decisions for employees right now with this specific agenda, that while there may be things we hear that we do not like, that we do not take it out on the employees. This has gone through extensive, extensive conversations between our city attorneys who have been tied up in this, as well as those representing the officers. And so I want us to be very mindful as we cast our votes that a lot of hours have gone into these negotiations and that there are people who, again, we have to look at, these are, this is someone's livelihood. And so sometimes we have to get over being offended and vote for what's best. We do not have people lining up to work for this city. And so to further insult the people that are trying to work for this city by refusing to vote to do something that will increase their value of life simply because we don't like something someone says to us, it is unfair and it is irresponsible in our positions. Roll call, madam clerk.
Ms. Johnson is absent. Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mushat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett?
No.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
The vote is four yes, one no?
The vote is four yes, one no. Again, the vote is four yes, one no. The resolution for collective bargaining has failed. Moving on to resolution two five zero two seven eight dash T. What is the pleasure of the body? Which, a two five zero two seven eight dash T settlement, twenty twenty-five national opioid settlement with Purdue and certain of its affiliates and the Sackler family, what is the pleasure of the body? I would move actually that we leave this here because we were not able to go into a closed session.
That was my motion.
Councilwoman Priestley has made the motion that we leave this in special affairs. Is there support? Moved and properly supported, roll call, properly supported by the councilman in the first ward. Roll call, madam clerk.
Ms. Priestley?
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is absent. Ms. Mushat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson is absent. The vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is a five yes, zero no. So two five zero two seven eight dash T, which is the settlement for the twenty twenty-five national opioid settlement with Purdue and certain of its affiliates and the Sackler family, will stay in special affairs. Moving on to resolution two five zero two seven nine dash T, which is the settlement for the twenty twenty-five updated Michigan State subdivision agreement allocation of opioid settlement agreements, generic manufacturer, national opioid claims. I would move the same thing. What is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
I'd like to make a motion to leave this in special affairs.
There's been a motion to leave this in special affairs because we were not able to go into closed session. Is there support? Supported by the councilman in the first ward. Roll call, madam clerk.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns is absent. Ms. Mushat?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. Resolution. Resolution two five zero two seven nine dash T, which is the settlement for the twenty twenty-five updated Michigan State subdivision agreement allocation of opioid settlement agreements, generic manufacturer, national opioid claims will stay in special affairs. Moving on to reali, excuse me, resolution two five zero two nine zero dash T, which is the reallocation of ARPA funds, North Flint Food Market Cooperative, what is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
Send to council.
There's been a motion to send to council. Is there support? Supported by the councilman in the first ward. Is there discussion in the first round? Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
As previously stated over and over and over again, I will not vote to support this resolution, and I have received more comments from residents of the fourth ward regarding this issue than any other, and they have all urged me to vote no.
You done? Okay, is there anybody else who would like the floor in the first round of discussion?
Thank you, madam chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
Alright, so as a resident of the second ward, which is adjacent to the food market, we have a lot of residents that are asking for us to do whatever we can to push it over the finish line so they can have a safe place to shop for groceries and fresh meats. So I am totally for this, but I know we don't have the, the support here this evening. So I would like to encourage my colleagues to consider leaving this in special affairs or, or not, because we want to make sure that they have an opportunity to vote.
There is someone here to speak to this.
I'm, I'm sorry, madam.
There is someone here to speak to this?
Oh, there's someone here to speak? Yes, did we have someone here from the market? Okay, yeah, so through you.
Would you please join us at the lectern?
Thank you.
Yes, so hi, and thank you so much for coming. So if you could, could you just tell us a little bit about, about what this is? Because we've been dealing with this for years, and it may have got lost in somewhere. So just so people can have an understanding of what exactly is the North Flint Food Market?
Definitely, thank you very much. My name's Chris Morris. I'm here as interim general manager with the market. Been working with them for several months here now as we're getting towards the final push to get open. And, you know, the North Flint Food Market is a consumer-owned cooperative, so it'll be the only community-owned grocery store in Genesee County. Very excited to be working with a lot of, you know, community organizations to bring that to fruition. You know, you don't have to be an owner to shop there, but, you know, owner, ownership allows you a democratic voice, a chance to be on the board, to set direction and policy, and a chance to earn dividends from the profits. So as a co-op, anybody is welcome to shop with us, but, but it'll be unique in that it's very transparent and democratic in an organization, I think, so.
Alright, and so can you tell us, I know you're new being on board, can you tell us a little bit about some of the challenges that you all had in terms of opening up? Some of the challenges, so like, for example, this is something that I've heard, you know, by being on the north side, it will, it has been the target for theft and vandalism.
Yeah, that is, you know, of utmost concern, you know, so we've, we have a lot of, you know, measures in place, you know.
Can you please pause the time? Excuse me, sir. Can you step aside? I can't see. Yeah, can you step over, please? Thank you. Ms. Williamson? I know that the hallway is echoing because it's empty, so we can hear you up here. I would ask that you would either be in or out. You cannot block the doors. And sir, you've been removed from this meeting. It is five forty-seven in the evening. City Hall is no longer open. Would you please exit the building? Sir, exit the building. However you leave is up to you. And. He's standing inside of council chambers inside the door, blocking a door that he was put out of.
And point of order, madam chair.
What is your point?
So the point is, just so the audience is aware, that the chief made it really specific that when you are removed from these meetings, you are not only to leave the chamber, but you are to leave the premises when you are ejected from the council meeting. Indeed. Indeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue her time.
Okay. So, I was talking about the things leading up to the opening, so not while it's open, because I was told that while they were in construction, a lot of site equipment was stolen, and so they had to recoup a lot of those things back. You might not even be aware of that.
Yeah, no, I cannot speak to that. I apologize.
Okay, all right. So, with my last two minutes, just want you to express why this is important for this community, and you can also lean on some of the success stories in other communities that have spearheaded a co-op like this.
No, thank you, and I, you know, I work with co-ops throughout the country, so I'm just here as interim GM, but I think it's quite important because it's community-owned, you know, so it provides access not only to a food desert, you know, but it's owned and operated by the people that will benefit from it. Co-ops have a cyclical, you know, value to them and rotate dollars back into the community. So, they have access to much more local vendors and partners, you know, than your typical chain store would have. So, you know, the challenges of funding, you know, we don't have a large corporation backing us, so it's been grassroots organization, and, you know, it's just, you know, 10 to 15 years is a typical timeline to get these things to fruition, so.
You said 10 to 15 years?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
So, it's been, it's been a journey, you know, and there's a lot of excitement. You know, we have about 1,000 member owners right now from the community, many organizations as organizational members, and, you know, we'll continue to grow that and give back to the community.
Okay, so when are you projecting to open?
Early to mid-November.
Okay.
So, it's coming quick.
All right. And so, and what exactly would these funds do?
So, these typically, or these funds would in particularly be used for staffing, which next to cost of goods is our second-largest expense, and it'll be for staff, training and development with youth and young adults.
All right, so this $300,000 will be used to provide jobs for local residents to work at the north end.
Forty-plus jobs that we're hiring here in the next two months here, so.
Did you say 40-plus jobs?
Yeah, be over 40 jobs that we'll be starting with, you know, and hiring from the community.
Wow, okay. So, that's definitely what the residents said they wanted. Fresh food, new jobs coming to the cities, probably the north side. So, thank you. I'll wait my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like the floor in the first round of discussion? Uh, sir?
Oh.
Is there anybody else who would like the floor in the first round of discussion? All right, seeing as how there's no one else who would like the floor in the first round of discussion, I will go ahead and take my time. So, it cannot be stated enough, the fact that Flint is a food desert, that we do not have grocery stores within our city limits. One of the things that you said that I really wanted to point out is the fact that, in addition to that, because we know we're in tough economic times, as a matter of fact, there was just a report released that there are more unemployed people than there are jobs currently in America right now. And so, we have an opportunity to create 40 more jobs. In addition to that, there's 975 member owners, 31 Flint churches are members of this co-op. And so, what we're doing here today is telling 975 people who have invested their money, 31 churches who have invested their money, invested back into the community, that the city of Flint is either willing to invest as well or not willing to invest. That's what we're, the message that we will be sending today. I also want to be clear that we will be the first, first and only community-owned grocery store in Flint and Genesee County. So, once again, Flint is making history, something we are known to do in the city. Not only is it good that we're making history, but we're also taking away from people having to go and travel way out and spend money elsewhere. Like you said, those dollars are going to be recycled within our community, which is what we need for some development and other things to happen here, so that more money is put back into Flint. I also want to be very clear, I am here today to tell 975 people who have put the investment in that I am willing to put the investment in as well. Want to point out the fact that CSMOT 1.5 million has invested in Flint, the USDA, NIFA $180,000 has invested in Flint, Healthy Food $150,000 has invested in Flint, HUD $260,000 has invested in Flint, MSP Security $150,000 has invested in Flint. Everyone has invested in Flint. We, as a body, have an opportunity to invest in Flint, and I know that I have a couple of colleagues who are part of that 975-member body who have already chosen to invest in Flint. What we're looking at here is an opportunity to own a store, to have dollars circle here, to create jobs when we're in the middle of a market that has more people in need of a job than there are jobs. So, we're helping to solve a problem right here in our city, so that we don't feel that impact as tough as we would be. And then, again, again, there is no reason that the city of Flint, we constantly talk about the things that we need here from entertainment, for things for children to do, from safer environments, and now we're talking about food and food access and giving you an opportunity to have access to food, having the opportunity to have a grocery store right here in our city, on the north end, which we constantly speak about, the disinvestment that happens there. And so, and then, again, this is something that has been years in the making, years in the making. What I will not do is tell 975 people in 31 churches that what you believed in, what you had hoped for, how you thought to build our community and to secure food in our community, that I will not support. So, thank you. Is there anyone who would like the floor in the second round of discussion?
Wait.
All right, seeing as how there's no one who would like the floor in the second round of discussion, councilwoman in the second ward.
Thank you. Um, sir, is there anything that you would like to add before we call for the vote?
No, I think you articulated that very well. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, so, again, thank you so, thank you so much for coming, and hopefully, I know that we don't have, like I said, the votes tonight to pass this. Hopefully, we can move this to another committee, or leave this here, so we can give the other council members that are not present an opportunity to vote on this historic thing that's happening right here in the city of Flint. And also, just want to stress again, you know, this is what the residents said they wanted. You know, she read the stats, how many churches bought in, how many people bought in, and then we're about to bring in 40 members? Now, it's kind of disappointing to hear the councilman in the fourth ward say she's against it, where some east-side residents may need a job and might try to work at the Flint Food Market, but nevertheless, we want to make sure that we are providing jobs, that we're providing fresh food, opportunity, a quality of life, and also, we're boosting up neighborhood value. On that north side, they didn't have anything, nothing. And so, what this food market is doing is helping to boost that. They have a brand-new remodeled school, elementary, as well as middle school. They have a brand-new food market. This is what they've been waiting on for a very long time. So, hopefully, those that are elected, we're able to give the residents what they've been waiting on for a long time. So, thank you, and thank you. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
All right, is there anybody else in the second round of discussion who would like the floor?
No.
All righty, seeing as how there's no one else who would like the floor in the second round of discussion, I'm gonna go ahead and just take two more seconds to once again tell you. Forty jobs will be created in a time where we have more people in need of jobs than actual jobs existing. 975 members of our community believe so much in our community that they took it upon themselves to invest their personal dollars back into our community. 31 churches thought so much of our community and the fact that we needed food access right here in our community, we needed a grocery store, dollars to recycle in our community, that 31 churches put their money, their personal money into this investment into our community. This store will be the first and only community-owned store in Flint and Genesee County. So, again, we always talk about Flint, the rich history of Flint. We have an opportunity to be in on the rich history of Flint and create history ourselves here on today. We talk about the fact that you have one, two, three, four, or five different entities that have already invested money, again, believing in our community, telling the 975 members that they believe in Flint, that they want us to have access to food, that they want our dollars to cycle and stay in our community. We have an opportunity to do so today ourselves. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Wait.
Ms. Burns is absent. Ms. Mushat?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
As a shareholder member, I abstain.
Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. The vote is three yes, one no, one abstention.
The vote is three yes, one no, one abstention. That resolution fails. Moving on to Resolution 250291-T, which is the public hearing, the day for, the public hearing date for the obsolete property rehabilitation district, 703 South Grand Traverse Street in Flint. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilmen in the first ward?
I'd like to move to council.
There's been a motion by the councilman in the first ward to move this resolution to council. Is there support?
Support.
Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the fourth ward. Is there discussion in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the ninth ward, you have the floor.
Who is here tonight that can speak to this?
So, I have a couple of things. So, we do have, I believe there's still someone from the administration here who can help if you have any of those questions, but if you would like more information on what this property is going to become, the owners of the property is here. They are here, excuse me. Would you please join us at the lectern?
If we can hear from... Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you tell me a little bit about both what, what goes on there now, what goes on hereafter, why this request is before us?
Yes, sir. Right, the property was most recently used as a law office. It's on Grand Traverse. It's one of the grand homes that used to exist there. We plan on redeveloping it as a restaurant space in the city of Flint. I'm sorry, there was a follow-up to your question. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, and we require...
I was asked if we could have you state your names for the record.
Oh, yes. My name is Theodore Van Stein, and...
I'm Emily Fewer-Herm.
Okay. Now, it's currently, or has previously been used as a law office, you say?
Yes, sir.
And you are looking to renovate it to a restaurant of sorts?
Yes.
Okay. And is it currently, why do we have to go through this step?
Because we applied for a Build My Community grant from MEDC, and we're required to get a city contribution, and when we met with the city, the city advised us to proceed down this path in July of 2024. So, in accordance with what was requested of us from the city, we applied for this as a necessary condition to get our Build My Community grant, which would bring state money into our project.
So, the city is gonna be providing funds for this?
No, it's the obsolete property rehabilitation, so it's a property tax freeze, as opposed to the city actually contributing any financial resources.
Okay, hold on, back up for me for a minute, because initially, was it that with MEDC you had to get something from the city?
The city has to show some kind of contribution and investment in the project in order for us to qualify for the Build My Community grant.
And the city's contribution will be a tax?
A property tax freeze under the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act.
Okay. Would that come, would that have already been, has that already been approved to your knowledge?
That's what we're seeking here today.
So, this is all part of that?
Yes, sir.
So, you've already been able, for the most part, to secure the funding for the renovation?
Yes, we have approved loan with Huntington Bank. We're gonna be investing about $950,000 in creating 10 jobs with this project, but this is contingent on that state money. The project does not cash flow without it, so it is a pretty critical step for us to be able to make this investment in the city of Flint. You know, we've been here for about 10 years. We live in the city of Flint. We're raising our family in the city of Flint. We love the city of Flint, and we're looking forward to helping make it a better place.
Is this, is this, is the restaurant business, is that gonna be a new exploration into that field, or?
I have scant experience back in the day, but we'll be hiring a manager. We have to keep working our permanent jobs for a while, so we'll be hiring a professional restaurant manager, which is, will be one of the hired positions that we'll be bringing to the city.
Thank you. Thank you for answering the questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being present. I yield.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the first round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward?
It was, what, 10 months ago that you came to the EDC, the Economic Development Corporation?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad to see you coming, finally.
Thank you.
Because I really liked the proposal that you provided us. I wish there had been a little bit more backup to this program, but this is just setting the hearing. And I want to thank you for your willingness to invest that kind of money into this community. And there's always, if you provide good food, good service at a, at a good price, people will flock to your establishment, and I hope for that for you if this passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the first round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. So, question, what made you choose Flint for your business?
We've been living here for 10 years. I'm a professor at the University of Michigan, Flint. That's what brought us here.
Okay, so what made you choose Flint for your business, though?
I was excited to learn about the rich history of Flint, and I really liked the idea of, you know, being part of the redevelopment. And so, you know, we, our property is, you know, a few blocks from, you know, where major actions in the sit-down strike happened, and that's what we're theming our restaurant on. So, I just love the idea of paying homage. I love the idea of just kind of being a part of the history and being a part of that. And I think, you know, that I agree that there is a big appetite for restaurant and dining, and, you know, and so, we'd like to help bring that to the community.
And celebrate the building and the space and the history, importantly. That's why the restaurant is gonna be called Sit Down Taproom and Purveyor, in order to celebrate the incredible history of this place. This man is very much a history buff, and we have spent many hours in the archives looking through pictures and really getting to know more about the city since coming here, and looking at the pictures, understanding this history, and we love it and want to celebrate it.
And I see you brought a crew with you. So, I take it that you all support what they're doing?
Absolutely. All Flint residents also.
Oh, all righty. Well, listen, this is music to my ears, because we want new businesses. We want people to come here. We want you to call this place home so we can grow and thrive. So, thank you all for, for one, choosing Flint to live, and thank you for choosing Flint to grow your business.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. It means a lot. So, although your councilperson is not here, I know that I probably could speak on her behalf and say, this is something great, a great addition to downtown, to the fifth ward, a great addition to the city. So, you definitely have my wholehearted support, and I'm looking forward to seeing you thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the first round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one else in the first round of discussion, I will go ahead and take my time. I had an opportunity to come and take a tour. I know you have also been working with your councilperson. I know that she is supportive of this. This is a restaurant that's gonna be open in the fifth ward. The fifth ward has a nice little corridor coming, where there will be places for us to sit down and eat. That is going to be lovely to have in addition to a grocery store, right? So that, on days where people cannot necessarily afford to go eat, they have the grocery store there. But, I am excited for what you're doing, and I love pizza. I could have pizza any day of the week, and so, I am in support of this. I agree with my colleagues. So, this is, again, another way, because you both live in our community as well, another way to keep dollars cycling in Flint. And so, just thank you for coming tonight and letting us know what is happening with this property, letting us know about your business, and thank you for naming your business after something so rich in Flint's history. Truly appreciate that. That is it for the first round of discussion. Is there anyone who would like the floor in the second round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one else who would like to speak, then we will now move to the, uh, roll call vote for Resolution 250291-T, which is the public hearing date for the obsolete property rehabilitation district for 703 South Grand Travers Street in Flint. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Mishat?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. The vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. Resolution 250291-T, uh, has been moved to council. Moving on to the special order discussion item 250292-T, which is the special order addressed from the City Council Vice President. 10-minute special order to allow for a brief address from City Council Vice President Candace Mishat. Please start the time. All right, colleagues, thank you so very much, uh, for allowing me this time to address you. Last week, we had, um, I had an oppor, excuse me, not last week, but the last special affairs committee meeting, there were some action items put into place. I won't actually be before you long, just 10 minutes in case someone would like to respond or have any questions, any of my colleagues. Really quickly, there were some items that we discussed, um, taking place, uh, in between now, the last meeting and now. I do want to say that a, um, letter of collaboration was sent to the Saginaw City Council. As of right now, we've only had a response from one council member, but the, the letter was sent, um, over the holiday weekend. And so, you know, I'm assuming that they needed to get back in, get their bearings and get to work. But we did get a response from one council member who is looking forward to working with us in any way possible. That letter was sent because we do know that there seems to be some underlying tensions between, uh, some Flint youth and Saginaw youth. And so, we just want to make sure that we are doing our parts, um, to help in any way that we can as elected officials. And so, there was a letter sent out to their body in Saginaw. One person did respond and is looking forward to us reaching back out to them and working with us in any way that they can. There was also a former, a formal letter sent to, uh, Mayor Neely. It was sent, it was emailed to Mayor Neely, emailed to his secretary. I believe, uh, the city administrator might have gotten the email as well. If he hasn't, I will take a look at that and make sure that he gets the email. Uh, and in addition to it being emailed to them, I also personally dropped the letter off to the mayor's office to his front desk person. So, hopefully, he was able to receive that letter. That letter was simply to ask that moving forward, um, in order to help our clerk get things done in a timely manner, that the 12 noon deadline is honored every week as far as having resolutions or any items that they would like added to our agenda to the city clerk so that we can, um, get our agenda sooner. I believe this week, Madam Clerk, we did pretty good with that, correct? There, the items were turned in by noon? It was better than normal? We made some progress?
Better than normal.
We made some progress. Uh, in addition to asking for the items to be turned in, um, at the correct deadline for the council, we were also asked that we have several items given to us and more than, uh, at one time. So, that way, if we got up to maybe 10 to 20 item, 10 to 20 resolutions at a time, we would have the opportunity to properly schedule those resolutions out for different committees. That way, if anyone needed to come and address the council, they would have enough lead time to make any, uh, special allowances that they needed so that they could get to our council meetings on time. We did not receive, um, a lot of items as far as I know, but I think that we're heading into our first committees since the request was made. So, I guess we will see as we head into those committee meetings. But that letter, that formal, formal letter was sent as well. There was a request from someone, uh, else who, um, had been watching our meetings, one of the residents, who stated that they think that it would also be a good idea that as we get the resolutions in a timely manner and we get them ahead of time, that if council had any questions regarding the resolutions, um, that we send them to the city clerk ahead of time. That way, as the administration comes to speak, that, that the administration would already know some of the questions we would possibly have and so that we wouldn't keep getting met with, they don't know, they're not sure, or it has to be sent to us later. And it would help kind of streamline the process of us, uh, getting the work done. And so, I would ask my colleagues and, um, uh, I guess an email, a friendly email will be sent through the city clerk asking that we in turn do that kindness as well if, if they get it to us in a timely manner, that we send any questions ahead of time so they're not standing before us unable to answer what we might possibly ask. Um, there was also a letter sent out to the special master. I assume, I'm expecting an update on that soon, very soon. Cause I know that, um, we have residents who have some questions that we would love to be able to hear some answers from the special master because we heard that earlier. So, uh, as we await, um, further movement on that, we will give that information to you as well. But just to let you know, the three items that we discussed, all three letters were sent. The letter to the mayor's office was sent, um, the letter to the special master and also the letter to Saginaw City Council. Wanted to update everyone on, um, our movements there. Uh, we have five minutes left. Is there anyone in the body who has any particular questions regarding these movements?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the ninth ward.
Um, could you share a little bit about the letter to the special?
Yes.
Master?
Gladly. Give me one second. Um... Can we pause the time one second, please? Get that for you.
Um, Madam Chair, just sort of the nature of the...
Yep, so it was just simply, um, and it just said the Flint City Council would like to extend a special invitation for you to address the council during an upcoming special affairs meeting. We would really greatly appreciate your presence. Okay, you can start the time. We would greatly appreciate your presence to provide residents with an update on settlement payments and to help them better understand the process. And that, uh, just letting her know the meeting would begin at 4:30 PM and that if she would come prepared to do about a 15, 20-minute, uh, presentation to the public. And that, yeah, that, that's pretty much it. Just asking her to come and do a 15, 20-minute presentation. Uh, and I think that if there are any questions that we want to compile, because I know we hear from residents, if residents want to send us their questions. So, if there are questions that we want to compile, we can send them to her ahead of time so that she can just include those in her presentation so that, um, once she leaves here, residents feel as though they've had some things answered. Uh, and we can compile those and send those to the clerk and, uh, the clerk can get those to leadership and we'll make sure that it is given to the correct person. Okay? Uh, is there anyone else? All right, seeing as how there isn't anyone else with any questions, uh, the special order, uh, discussion item is now closed. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
There is a motion to adjourn by the councilwoman in the fourth ward. Is there support? Supported by the councilman in the ninth ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Mishat? The vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. The time is now 6:17 PM on Monday, September 8th. The special affairs committee meeting is adjourned. Want to remind everyone, you have five minutes if you need to fill out a speaker slip for council.
I think it's why they bought these chairs. That's right. She's right. When they get right, I'll get right. But then, when they end, damn them. Damn them to hell.
So unfortunately, um, uh, we will have to have to, um, drag them on.
Yeah, so they did that woman in the fourth door, the third door. And where is she? You think that's right? No. Miss Beverly part that election three times. Now, I vote for my support every time.
Yeah. So I don't need that information.
That's right. Damn.
A coward ass.
They don't change.
A nigger. See my eye, a coward ass nigger. So would I give a fuck about that? Woman beater, that ain't about nothing. I didn't know why I was coming down here to talk to you. But you showed me why. When you got up that bench and wanted me to come, I was coming because in my head it's Kim Kill. I feel what you were. I knew what you was. Now, I hope you'll take it for today. Because I don't know saying.
Because the neighbors sit up and back here.
Did I get that?
It is, it's, it's, what's the Bible say about a man that mistreats his wife? Yeah. And it's a sandal.
Uh, what? Man, that piece of, where what you have to, they try to kill you, right? The limo blow over. This is the gas tank threw up at the, uh, what, when you ever to be. Oh, never ever think of that. You got to do a walk around.
Would all city council members return to their seats so that we can start this council meeting? Thank you.
Look to your face with all you want back. They all just still doing that stuff right in front of your face. You ain't saying nothing about.
I ain't telling today, dawg. I ain't telling, I'm one of y'all. I'm one of y'all. I'm one of y'all. Right? Why? Why? You tell me, you tell them. A thousand, hey, you get this guy, you know, mother. Think of a thousand. I get along with you. You believe, you don't even punch your back. That hurt us more when you leave. But woman never told you that, I'm gonna tell you that. You should have, yeah. That would have told. That would be wrong. That would be wrong. I'm thinking prayer. Because I want to know what mother's, what y'all praying. Let me make sure. Oh, I better shut up. I might be. I'm shutting up, okay? I'm shutting up my mouth about the sipping. I want to be here. Shut up.
He bring the grapes.
I'm, I'm going tomorrow. Corporation's got him on staff for about 4:09. I'll bring some glaze, babe.
Yeah, he needs to. I know what I want. I know what I want. That would be my daughter. Wouldn't be on earth that.
It is 6:33 PM. And I am calling this city council meeting to order per city charter, city charter section 3-201B. Um, and before we move on with the organization of the city council, I will take a roll call. Mr. Alameen. Dr. Lewis.
Present.
Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley.
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat. Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett.
Present.
You have five members present.
Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley.
Make a motion to move the organization of council to the end of the agenda.
Ms. Priestley has made a motion to move the organization of the city council to the end of the agenda. And that motion was supported by Ms. Mashat. So we will take a roll call on that motion. Mr. Alameen.
Yes.
Dr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley.
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat. Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett.
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no. So we will move on with the rest of the agenda.
All right, it's time for the pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman Mashat, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Let the nation elect to the black of United States of America. In this republic, for which it stands, one nation, undebted, and individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, um, before we do the blessing, we would like to see if we have anyone that would like to acknowledge anyone that may have transitioned so we can have a moment of silence.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Mashat.
Don't do that. Um, I would like to ask that we continue to keep, um, the Edwards family in prayer as they've just laid to rest, uh, their matriarch. Also, ask that we keep, somebody else can go, because I have to find a name.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Garrett.
Um, I too, uh, echo that with regard to the Edwards family, um, keeping them in prayer as well as, uh, the Humphrey slash Massey slash Rutherford family, uh, to keep them, um, encouraged and, and supported in prayer.
All right. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Alameen.
I ask that we keep the Sawyer family in prayer.
All right. The Sawyer family. Anyone else? All right, seeing that there's no one else, I'll go ahead and add, um, three individuals. The first is the family of Ms. Renee Lee Benson, Renee Lee Benson. Next, Ms. Lorraine Meeks, Ms. Lorraine Meeks. Next, Ms. Sonya Humphrey, Ms. Sonya Humphrey. And then next, um, Mr. Lanell Sanders, Mr. Lanell Sanders. So we want to keep those families before, um, our Creator. And so we are going to ask, um, Prophetess Hall if she could please approach the lectern and deliver a blessing for the meeting.
Praise the Lord. I'm hearing in honor. Lord, have mercy, Jesus. I'm going to say the Lord's Prayer. Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily prayer and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, power, and glory forever and ever. Amen. God is our refuge and our strength in a very personal, helping, and time of need of trouble.
Thank you.
We got trouble here.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
I'm here to represent Eric Mays.
Ms. Ms. Hall? Yeah, so we just need the prayer. You can, um, do your speaking during coun- during comments for the public.
Do what now?
So, when it's time for you to have your three minutes to speak, yeah, we're going to call you up so you can have time.
Oh, go back.
Yeah, that was just for the prayer.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Now, we will read the disorderly persons city code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting would be in violation of the Flint City Code, section 3110, disorderly conduct, assault and battery, and disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meeting. So, do we have any requests for agenda changes or additions? Seeing that we have none, we will go on and to public comment. So the first speaker, Madam Clerk.
The first speaker is Zoe Lynch.
Hi, I'm Zoe Lynch, and I just wanted to invite the community to, uh, a public gathering that's going to take place on September the 27th at, uh, the Church Without Walls, co-sponsored by Genesee Health System and NAMI, the National Alliance for Mental Illness. It's going to be a, um, uh, eye care walk that will be a one-mile walk. In addition to that, we will have food and, uh, entertainment. So you're all welcome to join us. It will be at, uh, it'll be at two o'clock, two to, uh, approximately four or five. And, uh, there'll be food and, uh, entertainment. So, please come join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Sarah Houston.
Yeah, she's not here.
Next speaker is Stanley Wood.
All right, um, Councilwoman Lewis, thank you for answering my email I sent the other day. I really appreciate it. I sent one to everybody. I didn't expect the response. Hopefully you got it. It was just an idea on what Baltimore is doing with their crime prevention and how they, how they're working through it. Uh, Councilwoman Mashat, um, I'm not going to call you a liar. I'm gonna say maybe you're misinformed. Uh, my wife says I need to be a little bit nicer. Um, you said there's no grocery stores in the city of Flint, was your words, but there is a Kroger, a Landmark, uh, I think a Great Giant, uh, I don't know more than that. Um, you stated that $1.5 million came from the Mott Foundation. It's actually $3.6 million. They gave $2.1 million in the beginning and another $1.5. Um, to the city attorney, uh, do council rules supersede the Flint City Charter? I think that's an obvious question, but I, I want to ask this because according to the Flint City Charter, the president and vice president hold their position for one year. It does not say or until a new one is elected. That is not in the charter. It is in the council rules, though. I think the charter is what controls the government here. Um, Councilwoman Lewis, you have a 25% attendance since the end of summer break. And Councilwoman Johnson, hers is 25% since coming on the council. Those aren't very good numbers. Uh, I do have a question about how do you write letters to like Flint versus Saginaw or the special master when there was no resolution or anything like that that was voted on to do something like that? Do we just make decisions as a council person to do that kind of stuff? Uh, should that come up, uh, in front of council? And then I see Councilman Alameen is not here or not sitting in his seat right now. I didn't expect him to, but I wanted to explain to him what the difference is of sponsoring someone and being a supporter of someone. When you buy shirts for people, that's being a supporter. It's not a sponsor. Clearly, he doesn't live at 606 East Mott or didn't when he, uh, started to, his intention to run for office. I have, uh, I haven't personally, but, uh, the city clerk is going to give me the information on how to determine residency so I can consider running. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Ariel Mitchell.
Hello, I'm Ariel Mitchell. Uh, speaking on the food desert in Flint, uh, I heard Ward One, Mr. Idi Amin, oh, my God, he didn't left again. But anyway, to, uh, from due to Idi Amin, uh, I heard you say you were still working taking care of the ward while you was absent. And, uh, we the people, as a baby boomer, the last of the most, the baby boomers in Flint, have you had anything to do with the 40 hiring of the new restaurant, new food thing over on Kaya Road? I mean, ask that after you, after I get to talking. But, uh, anyway, about the food market again, about, uh, last week, I was, I was given a gift of eight peaches in a bag, but it was, the mother hired things by a Hilter, a woman named Hilter. She German descent, Ger- a height. And she, uh, she gave me this hat here. But I was, I got on the bus with it, about 10 people was asking me for a peach. But they, when I reached, let them reach, they said, no, that's too hard. They ain't, they got their tooth pulled out, they can't chew them. But I went over on York Street and the street was all chewed up by the construction. My significant other went home, so I sat in the yard, I got hungry, I started eating. And every last one of them was hired, I spent, throw them out in the street. But when she came home, she said the neighbors, they don't like me, they won't, but they don't send that to me. But, uh, I'm saying that about how you are, that a messed up Flint, and people's got to get, get to the, uh, look over that Idi Amin stuff. I mean, I look over that, that, I bet, I was, it, what I'm trying to say, ain't nobody down here for 31 churches. We finna get our own Hammy Brothers in Flint and preachers and everybody and nobody. And when it's camp, push, anyway, we gonna get to the supermarket anyway. But, but, uh, but, but the Ward Two woman always trying to say, oh, we duck, they think, hey, she talking about, we duck, I'm like, they stole the stuff, trying to, this scary Mr. Hammy Brothers. The dude ain't in, the little short guy, he gonna, he gonna make. Anyway, I was eating. I went down to the supermarket on Laredo Street. The Walleye Man was half price, what, 85, 89 cents? I found out, he trying to get rid of the Walleye Man because I bit into it and wasn't no flavor because the, the brown peoples refused to pick the fruit and he trying to get rid of them. And when they find that out, they say, ain't nobody, because stuff gonna really hit the sand. Bringing the brown people to work for under this, and all that stuff in America, you gotta, you gotta stay tuned, America, and all that.
All right. Thank you. All right, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Beverly Lewis.
Yeah, she's not here.
David Peche.
David Peche, Fourth Ward. I want to make a few comments about this grocery store that seems to be so important. It's been going on for almost 10 years. Eight to 10 million dollars going into this place. Where were you people at? Why weren't you over asking where all that money's going? When Myers closed up, when Hammy's closed up, when Kmart. When Myers closed up, when Hamley's closed up, when Kmart closed up over there. Where were you people at then when all these people were losing their jobs? It didn't seem to bother you? You know, these people have been without grocery store, they say, for years. They've been, they've been doing pretty good. I don't see any of them starving to death. I don't see them doing it. But you want to keep putting money into this place, my money, money that could be helping my street. My houses that need to be tore down. Instead, you want to keep pouring it into a grocery store. Do you realize right now Walmart, Kmart, all these stores are laying all people? How can you even Phantom making a go of this place? Most, down in Detroit, they got one of these co-ops going, just closed up. They can't make it. What makes you think you can make it? And another thing, is half of that store being run for a party store or something? Is half of it open?
Entertainment.
All right. That's all I got to say about that. As far as this guy goes over here, whether he's guilty or not, I don't know. But I know one thing, he ain't been convicted of a darn thing. And to treat him like you have is not quite right. It's not quite right.
Um, ma'am.
He's not been convicted. He's here. And I'm not taking his side. I'm just saying what's right and what's wrong. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Next speaker is Mari Copany.
Yep, he left.
Kilani Copany. Natalie Wright.
Yep, she's, she's gone too.
Gladys Williamson.
Yeah, and I will always speak to you like that because you are a dog-faced SOB. That's right. Don't be throwing me no kisses. You are throwing me kisses. You got a lot of nerve. You have no respect for women, none whatsoever. And I will never, ever, ever show you any respect. Never. 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 And the sooner you don't walk around on the face of the earth, the better off women will be because you will always make a victim out of women. And Judy Priestley, you managed a couple meetings ago to rattle off everything that you are, that you are. But here's something you're not with all them degrees or whatever you say you have. You can't tell us how much money is in the ARPA money that's left. So, it don't matter what you say you are. You're just trying to make yourself relevant. Yeah, because you are about as relevant as the dirt underneath my feet is, like this mayor is. You are not relevant until you start being honest and, and ask for repentance for the money that you've stolen and laundered. You are dirt. And Candace, when you sit up and you can show me where I've destroyed a mic or I've destroyed a table here, then you can sit up and tell me that I can't pound no more.
Ma'am, hold on, hold, pause your time real quick. Now, I'm gonna invite you to stop banging on the lectern.
I can pound if I want.
Okay, that's your warning.
For what?
For banging on the lectern.
Oh, so now.
So, so I'm letting you know. We, we trying to avoid having microphones.
You violating my First Amendment right.
Ma'am, I'm speaking.
Well, I'm speaking too, though.
Ma'am, but I'm the chair, and we're holding your time.
Who cares?
Who cares? I guess I do. That's your time. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk?
The next speaker is Beverly Biggs.
Um, we, we can't hear. In the corner, if we're gonna be loud, we're gonna have to get worn, so let's not. Again, let's lower your voice so we can hear the clerk. Thank you. Go ahead. Um, who's that, who, when, that's your warning? Okay. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is James Moore.
James Moore, 2nd Ward. It's good to be back. Still a little hard, but it's still good to be back. I want to thank the Lord for giving me the strength to be here. And I just want to say, you know, in the name of the Father, in the name of the Son, in the name of the Holy Ghost, you know, we need to remember the three minutes that we get at the lecter is sacred. Okay? So, let's all do a better job to be able to work together. Theresfor us, I just want to say a thank you to Hurley Hospital and the burn unit and how they was able to help me get back up on my feet. It's been a rough year on me. I stepped on a nail that went through my foot. I got bit by a pet bull, and I still have a hand. And a lot of the supporters out here, they call me the Whisperer. Well, I wasn't whispering when I got scolded out there. I was screaming and screaming loud. And I thank God that I was able to do that and still be here. I thank for the people that came out and rescued me. But I definitely thank, a shout out to Hurley Hospital for what they did. You know, and believe it or not, we may think we hate each other. We really don't. We just get our arguments mixed up sometimes. And with my 1 minute and 40 seconds left, I just want to be able to say, Judy Priestley from the 4th Ward, you are the first lady in the 1st Ward. And you have, from the years I've been coming down here, you have been very supportive of, you know, most of the 1st Ward, all of the 2nd, definitely over there of the 7th. And we don't know yet what's gonna happen with the 3rd, so I'm gonna just deal with the 4th. Judy, before the time ran out, do something for the east side. You know, we getting, got a new women's WCA. We getting the men's tearing down and putting up. That's the center of town. Y'all can get the credit to Mrs. Winfrey Carter. But we really need for you to do something for the east side, you know? Some of the best hockey players in the state of Michigan came from right over there off of the east side, you know? And maybe you can get a grocery store over there too. We got one just about open, and we should be able to get three more online after that. So, that way, the whole city is covered for the rest of Genesee County to be able to come into the city of Flint. Because truly, I am a Flintstone. This is a Flintstone town. We have, we have taken everything that has been throughout America, started over here dumping it on us, and we're still here. So, you know what the money is, like someone else has already asked, before it all be gone or the time run out? Please do something for the east side. Some of the best hockey players in the state of Michigan came from the east side.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moore. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
The next speaker is Mary Hall.
Good evening. Praise the Lord again. I'm here to represent Eric Mays. City Councilman. I am the one of the East Ridgeway Neighborhood Improvement Black Club Organization. Eric Mays ran for city council. This is Zivin A.
Sir, that is your warning.
This.
Proceed. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. This is the ward, my license, what you will call it, Don J. Williamson. This is the flyer. It was filed, we did, Fire Camps Neighborhood Improvement. I'd like you all to see it.
Go ahead.
I don't want to get out of order because I'm not paying no fine day. This is your other proof.
You got 35 seconds.
I can talk now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Now, I carried Eric Mays for city councilman, W., just a Don Williamson, the mayor of Don Williamson, and we had the cleanups and all that. I've been a community activist for over probably 32 years. I came down with counsel. This young man here, I don't know anything about him. So, when the election came up, I didn't carry him as city councilman because it was in my spirit something was wrong.
Okay.
So, what I'm saying is I need, I need
Private Hall.
to tell you that I'm not for him.
Yeah, so, so that's your time.
It's up?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
Well, that's my complaint.
So, that's your time.
And it'll get to the judges, and David Lake and Ghost.
Ms. Hall, thank you.
All right, next speaker, Madam Clerk?
The next speaker is Tanya Jones.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Jones. I am a concerned mother, a mama bear, and it's a blessing. My son is here tonight, and as I always state, he's a part of the opium crisis, and that's what got me here, and I'm thankful. And what's her name? Candace, if you spoke on his grandmother, Noralie Edwards, a matriarch that passed away, that was his grandmother. Okay, well, guess what I'm talking about her. So, I'm standing here. She just passed away. Her funeral, 95 years old. She had 12 kids, and his father was one of them. So, his father gone, so I'm here. I'm here, being a vessel for my son. He just lost his grandmother, so I'm here, and I'm grateful that he wanted to come down here. I didn't even want to come down here. So, my son back here, I'm proud of, D. Michael Edwards, that's part of the opium crisis. And here go. I want to know why do you have to go in the back when you're getting ready to speak about the opium money? Why do, why you gotta have a closed session? I would like to know that. So, I mean, it's a lot of stuff. I say, "I don't know nothing about this. Maybe if my father from Black Lives Matter could educate me." But I don't know what's going on when it come down here. I'm lost, and other than teaching us, it's like it's animosity within, within. It's like one ward here, one ward there. Candace, it'd be nice if you go speak to your, your church member, but no, you're not gonna do that. Anyway, I'm here. I'm thankful for being here. And as I seen, the video that was out that the mayor put up with the mu-mu, that we come down here for likes, for whatever, guess what? I have 144 friends on Facebook. I don't do it for likes, because guess what? If I want to do it for likes, I used to be exotic dancer. So, if I want to do for likes, I used to be exotic dancer. I'm down here trying to save my son, get all the help that I need. Thank you. Have a good night.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
The final speaker for this meeting is Ms. Jay Jackson.
Good evening. My name is Janess Jackson. I am Kiki's mother. As I sat here in this last meeting, as I sat here in this last meeting, I heard Judy say he is innocent until proven guilty. Were you there to see the bruises? Were you there to see the hair on the floor? Were you there to see the, the hair pull from her head? For you allow him to still sit on the seat of the council is a disgrace. Y'all heard the recordings. Y'all seen the texts. Y'all seen him in action with the gun. Y'all heard the lies of him staying on my street, but the PPO against Tanya Burns said 3375 Sherman. What, what would have it took for him to kill my child? What would it have took? Because I told you in the beginning, don't touch her. Don't touch her. And for Judy, what type of female are you? And for the boo-boo that supposed to have came over there to drag my daughter out? I protect my children, grandchildren, and this child at all means necessary. And for y'all to allow this demon, Leon Alameen, who is really a demon from hell.
That's right.
A demon, because you didn't have no business touching her. No woman, period.
No woman deserves to get beat.
None. And for my 19-year-old grandson to come to me to talk about an influence policy that you got against him that he did not sign? You need to, you need to find God. That's who you need to find. Until you off this council, you gonna see my face every time.
Yes.
Every time. And again, whoever talking about coming to drag my daughter, my children out, you got a problem, and I'm it.
That's right.
All right, Mr. Wood, that's your warning. You're out. You're gone from this meeting. Thank you. And Mr. Wood, please don't make a crazy exit because that's, that'd be another warning. Let's not get arrested. All right, so, so next, we have. All righty, so next, we have council response. Anyone would like to respond to the residents?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
Um, yes. So, Mr. Moore, I'm glad to see you back and well. I'm, you couldn't have gone to a better place. Hurley Burn Unit is superb and the best, the best north of Detroit, in the state, north of Detroit. So, I want to address some of your concerns, do better in, in the east side. Most of the land owned by, in the 4th Ward is either privately owned or land bank owned. There's no place to put anything. I am trying to work with developers, bring, get some housing in there, but it's a long process. So, I have, we have looked for property to put a community center in. There's not enough property there. The, the schools own property there, but they're not gonna do anything. Come on, they barely tear down buildings. The other thing I want to let you know is that there are actually two grocery stores in the 4th Ward. There's a Kroger, and there's Royal Fresh Market on Davison Road. So, I keep hearing there's no grocery stores in the city. There's Landmate, Landmark. I believe that's the name of the grocery store. I've never shopped there. It's not on my side of town. I don't know what kind of grocery store I've heard. I've heard it's expensive. I can't answer that. But when we talk about there not being any grocery stores within the city, But when we talk about there not being any grocery stores within the city, we're not telling the truth. Maybe they're not the grocery stores that you want, but there are grocery stores in the city. And I'm thankful that we do have two in the Fourth Ward to serve the residents who don't have cars on the far east side of the ward and the people, and the Kroger that brings people in from Burton as well as the, the, um, far east side of the ward. Thank you.
All right, anyone else would like to speak?
Thank you. So let's correct something here, because apparently it didn't... Yeah, it's actually, it is my turn, so if it disturbs you to hear, the door is right there.
Please pause her time. Did you, did you see who said it?
No.
All right. So I just wanted to, again, encourage you all, stop yelling out. I mean, we expect better from our youth, be the example. Go ahead. I am.
That's Billy Dansler.
Who, Billy, that's your warning. Thank you, go ahead.
You're welcome. So let, let, let's clear up something. Correct. Correct. There are grocery stores in the city of Flint, let me correct that, smaller grocery stores. We're saying there are no gro... You know what? I'm leaving it at that, hard stop, correction taken, thank you. Um, let's be careful on saying that people are being dishonest, Ms. Priestley. Another thing, I, I also thought I corrected it when I spoke and I said this is going to be a community-owned grocery store, first of its kind. But I can leave it at a hard stop of, there are... I didn't know that there was a Kroger on the East Side. I don't, I thought that was turned into something else. I thought that was turned into something else. That other, what's that store that's right there? That was turned into something else. Meyer is in Burton, there's no Meyer in the city of Flint. So... You, you talk about the Kroger? He says Center and Davison, so thank you for that correction. I don't care, there are grocery stores, is the point what they're making, and I, I'm in agreement with it. That's the only point they're making. So again, I'm going to be in strong support of the city having its own first, its own grocery store that its community built that, uh, they're putting into, first of its kind in Genesee County. Nine hundred and seventy-five people have already invested, thirty-one churches have invested, forty jobs will be created. So I'm going to continue my support in that. I do stand corrected, I take that correction, no problem. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, anyone else would like to speak during council comments? All right, so seeing that there is no one else to speak, I will go ahead and call for the pleasure of the body with the consent agenda. All right, so it's been moved and properly supported by the councilman in the First Ward. Any separations?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, 250-182.
Uh, one, one second. Okay, got it. And you said 250-222? Oh, the one that we just talked about? All righty, anymore? All right, so the consent agenda will consist of everything, oh, excuse me, it will consist of, do, 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 Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Resolution 250-277 was failed in special affairs.
You, you said it failed?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. All right, with the exception of 250-277. All right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can you, uh, speak those again, that is included?
Sure. All right, so 250-265, 250-284, 250... 291. Okay? All right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Sorry. Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no?
All right, the vote is five yes, zero no. And so we are going to the first resolution, which is 250-182. Want to go ahead and give the floor to Councilman Jarrett, what's, what's your pleasure?
Leave it here in council.
To leave it here in, um, in council? Okay, any support?
Support.
Support for that? So we are going to leave Resolution 250-182, that's the, the motion on the floor. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk?
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson is absent. Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns is absent. Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin? The vote is five yes, zero no?
All right, the vote is five yes, zero no, so that resolution will be left in council. So the next one that we separated is 250-223. What's your pleasure, Mr. Jarrett?
To leave it here in council.
All right, to leave Resolution 250-223 in council. Um, and support, that, did I hear the lady in the Seventh Ward say? All right. It is the grant acceptance.
Yes, uh, support.
All righty, so it has been moved and properly supported, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Johnson is absent. Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns is absent. Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. Resolution 250-223, the grant acceptance will be left in council. Um, all right, so, um, next on the agenda, that is all. Wait, so it, it was three unseparated?
Yeah, it was, wasn't separated.
All righty, so...
By the council comments.
All right, so, um, what's the pleasure of the body?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Motion on the floor to adjourn, supported by the Councilman of the Seventh Ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns is absent. Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson is absent. The vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no, and it's 717, and the City Council meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you.